It is 3:30 and we're going to call to order the Solid Waste Management Authority, City of Crescent City County, Delano State of California for this special session Tuesday, June 12th at 3:30. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Greenow?
Here.
Chair and Score?
I'm here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open up a time of public comment. Any member of the public can address the Solid Waste Management Authority on any matter on or off the agenda. After receiving recognition from myself, would you please give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes? Do we have any general public comment this afternoon? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and we'll move on into our open session items. On consent, we have four items, the minutes from the special session on Monday, May 14th, approval of a payment transfer between departments in Delano County roads for $12,227.80, approved to authority allocated bins to support the 2018 Delano County Fair, and a budget transfer 1718 in the amount of $60,335.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I need to update the amount for the budget transfer. It's in, I believe it's placed on the front of your desks. We've, as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, we need to make sure that there's enough money to pay our transfer station operations contractor, which is, of course, the largest budget expenditure month by month. So the budget transfer you have in front of you is actually in a value of $281,180.
Thank you. I knew this was sitting here and I just didn't look down. All right.
You're saying whether $60,000 to $281,180?
That, that's correct. And you can see on the one that you have that most of that is because of the increase in the Transfer Station Operations Fund, 20239, and so that's the reason for the magnitude of this change.
All right. Okay, with that, with that change then, with the updated amount of $281,180, then our consent items are as I notated.
I move to approve our consent calendar with the amendments.
All right. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do you have any public comment on the items on consent? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Chair and Score?
Yes. Very good. Move on to the Treasurer's Report and Director's Report. Mr. Ward?
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Score. So upcoming events, once again, our transfer stations have been open all posted hours and we provide these services without receiving a penny in taxes. Our upcoming events this coming month, on June 16th, Saturday, from 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM, we'll have another free mattress recycling event in partnership with the Mattress Recycling Council and Hambro WSG will take up to four mattresses or box springs from Delano County households that morning. And happy to continue that program. We're doing those events approximately quarterly. And since our last event, we're happy to announce that Humboldt Moving and Storage is receiving mattresses for no charge on Wednesday mornings. Also this coming month, I'll be attending the Rural Counties Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority meeting and I will be facilitating a discussion regarding illegal dumping, as that seemed to be something that concerns all rural counties, but I was very interested in how other counties were addressing this issue of common concern. On July 4th, all our facilities will be closed, but we are, of course, supporting the Fourth of July Parade and fireworks that day. And July 5th, there will be a beach cleanup sponsored by surf riders and supported by the Solid Waste Authority. July, our Klamath and Gaski Transfer Stations are open an extra day each week. And we are continuing our radio program on KFUG on the second Friday of each month called Rethinking Recycling. And moving on, we talked about the budget transfer a little bit, and one of the things I am just positively thrilled about is Kira Seymour, our Facilities and Programs Coordinator, was successful in getting us to be participants in the Refuel Your Fund program. So I'll let her tell you about that.
The Refuel Your Fund program offers an alternative to the one-use disposable propane tanks often used to fuel camping stoves, portable grills, and lanterns. This program helps the environment, reduces hazardous waste, and saves people money. Currently, over 4 million disposables are purchased and disposed of in California alone each year, with 40 million in the entire U.S. Of the disposable tanks, 80% of the purchase price is in the container alone, which is then really difficult to dispose of. Even if it's empty, just the fumes under pressure make these small tanks hazardous and dangerous waste. But the refillables help reduce waste and they start saving people money. They pay for themselves basically just after five uses. And I have one to show you. They're really cute.
So it's a slightly different container. It's made for refilling?
Yeah. And we are having one place so far in this county starting up, and there should be more soon, at Hayuchi Hamlet. And, mhm. And so since we're surrounded by so many national forests and there's so much camping, recreating opportunities, we feel this is a really important and good fit for our county. And right now, we're actually, it's, it's, we're doing a swap-out program. So I've actually purchased a number of these and they will be at the Hayuchi Hamlet for people that have, have them and want to refill them. They'll just get a switch, a switch out, and they'll only pay for the fuel and the cost of filling.
They have to have one of those or can I take one of the ones I have for my camp stove?
You need to purchase the refillable container.
You need to purchase the refillables.
You're just swapping out.
Correct.
So where do you purchase refillables at and how much are they?
You can get them via Flame King. And there's also refillables purchased on, I purchased mine online from Flame King.
We will be doing a promotion for this program as soon as we have all of the pieces in place.
Yeah, they're not, they're...
Excellent. I love that you want it now. We want it now, too.
We, we want it now. We've wanted it for a long time. And now it's starting to be here, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yep. The last thing to mention is that we are still anticipating a reimbursement from Cal OES for the landfill repair. And we're expecting an amount of $87,132 we have yet to receive, but we're hoping to get that before the end of the month. With that, I'm done with the Director's Report. I can move on to the financial reports unless there are any questions.
Do you have any, have any questions for Mr. Ward? Okay, let's move on to financials.
Okay. Financial reports, our cash, including the, plus the $198,177, the last month's rent, we've got $771,338 in the bank. You'll notice that's a drop from previous months and part of the reason is that that was the month when all of the money taken for the transfer station floor repair and the landfill repair was taken out. So that ended up giving us quite a hit. Hopefully, some of that will be reimbursed. Regarding the accounts receivable summary, once again, Kathy Brewer is doing an excellent job. All of the ones that are over 90 days have already been turned over to collections. So mostly our, our cash flow is doing well. Regarding claims approved by Director, once again, you'll see that the largest payment was to Hambro Waste Solutions Group for the good services they provided at the Delano County Transfer Station. And second largest expenses include payment to Creative Information Systems for the technical support of the main software we use at Scale House and payment, an interdepartmental payment to the Delano County Auditor. Unfortunately, when we published the agenda, the monthly financial reports were not yet ready. So those were redistributed online, but I don't have printed copies for those who have printed copies of the agenda. But bottom line is that May was among the most active months we've ever had at the Delano County Transfer Station, so income is up. And specifically looking at how we compare to prior years, currently, our authority revenue from the transfer station is $64,460 ahead of budget and our revenues from the franchise fees are $14,022 ahead of budget. So on the whole, the budget's looking pretty good. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding the financials? Yes.
As far as the collections, I don't know, maybe it happened before I was on the board, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how much do we have to pay? Is it like a percentage?
Oh, well, we try to collect, and I wish Kathy was here to explain the whole process because I go over it, but I, she does it all, every month, all the time, and I dip into it occasionally. But essentially, when they're 60 days, they're given a notice when they're 30 days past due and invoice of the outstanding balance. At 60 days past due, if we haven't received anything, they get another notice saying we really got to receive the money. If we don't receive it within 30 days past then, I believe that there is a late fee and we put their account on hold. And then if we don't receive it 30 days past that, then they're, they are turned over to collections.
And the point where they're turned over to collections, do they take a certain percentage, like one-third, or how's that work?
It's a good question. I think that, I believe there's an initial fee of about 30 bucks and then the percentage, I'm not exactly sure of. But as you obviously know from the line of questioning, not all of those accounts can be collected. So a lot of them go into default, so we don't collect 100% of all of those. And you're right, of the ones that are collected, we only get a percentage. I can come back to the next meeting with answers to those questions.
Okay. I was just curious about the percentage because I noticed like, for instance, one of them was $85. So, you know, I'm just wondering if we need to have like a minimum of like 100 or, or if we should, you know, if it's just based on percentage, we can go after every one. But if there's a minimum that we have to pay, then, you know.
Would you like me to come back to the next meeting and sort of review how our collections go? I'd be happy to do that.
I would think so, as long as the rest of the board agrees.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions regarding financials? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and move on then into our regular discussion items. We don't have anything on the landfill, but we do have some discussions regarding the collections franchise and possible negotiations with Recology. You want to make into that?
Yeah, let's go into that. So essentially, the, at the last meeting, the Chair appointed an ad hoc committee to discuss the collections franchise agreement. And as has been alluded to in previous meetings, it's a pretty complicated agreement. There's lots of different pieces to try to understand. And so it really does take some people who are interested in going through that process. And we need some structure to negotiate this extension. So at the last meeting, there was an ad hoc committee that was appointed and unfortunately, that particular committee was not able to meet. So the Chair and Commissioner Naffa met to discuss some of the issues, but of course, we recognize that wasn't actually the ad hoc committee that was appointed. So the general conceptual structure that we're considering here is that because the franchise agreement is fairly complicated, what I would suggest is that we take it into chunks and that we try to address topic by topic, taking the broadest topics first and then narrowing down. And then bring those interim discussions back to the board so that the ad hoc committee or whichever group is we're designated to work with comes back with specific recommendations so that we don't get a, so that the ad hoc committee or whatever process is set up doesn't get too far ahead of the board. Because previously, we certainly had the experience of having a committee make recommendations and then board not adopt those recommendations and kind of frustration all around because not much action had been happening. And so what I would suggest is that, and we could rearrange this, but I would suggest that we have a meeting with ad hoc committee and staff to discuss some of the franchise fundamentals. How big is the franchise area? Where are those? How long is the term of extension? What services are going to be exclusive to the franchise? Are we going to discuss the potential inclusion of additional new services which have been included in other franchises, but those could include street sweeping or mobile shredding? Discussion of cart sizes. Come back to the board, get feedback on the decisions, then go back for the next round of negotiations, this time talking about recycling and processing. Defining what materials are going to be recyclable. Is there going to be any in-county processing? What would that look like? Are we going to continue the street-side recycling containers and how are we going to replace those? Are we going to continue the community bins? If so, at what locations? Commercial recycling, is that going to change? And if so, how? And then looking at other contract provisions that might accommodate changing recycling markets because certainly that's part of what has brought us to this discussion. The third module to discuss would be other services. Organics collections certainly top the list because the Cal recycle is definitely moving in the direction of requiring organics collections statewide. We have prepaid bag services, which some people really like. Sometimes the collection company is not as fond of. We have special collections such as the Christmas tree recycling or the bulky item collections. And then, of course, we have authority-directed services such as the authority bins that the authority sponsors to be placed for community cleanups. Then we have discussions about outreach and enforcement. How does outreach, how is outreach conducted? What are the tools? To what extent are we reaching into the schools? How are we monitoring the effectiveness of the outreach? And what are we doing regarding reporting and enforcement? And then finally, talking about the rate structure. My belief is that we probably have to significantly restructure how these rates are charged in order to eliminate the incentives that we currently have for people to place extra trash in their recycling bin. So in a series of, this obviously would take some time. We have five years approximately left in the current franchise, so we have time to negotiate this. But we do need to be making progress. So staff's recommendations are to, one, affirm that the board's intent is to negotiate a modification and extension of the collections franchise agreement with Recology. Two, affirm that the appointee, affirm the appointees to the ad hoc committee with the commissioner's understanding that progress in negotiations will be delayed to the extent that this committee can't meet. Affirm that the board intends that the ad hoc committee will have regular detailed discussions and negotiations with Recology Delnoort. And affirm that the board will consider interim recommendations from the ad hoc committee for direction or action by the authority board. So that's the structure, unless the board wants to have another structure, which is possible. For instance, when we negotiated the, when we were developing this franchise before releasing the request for proposals, we worked with the Solid Waste Task Force at that time. At this point, the Solid Waste Task Force is non-existent and there would have to be new appointees, but that's a process in itself. Bottom line, we have to figure out exactly how we're going to conduct these negotiations so that the committee doesn't get too far ahead of the board, but the board isn't wading through every last sentence of discussions because then all these meetings will be many, many hours.
Okay. Would one weigh in at all on, on Mr. Ward's presentation of where we stand with processing the future of negotiations with the franchise agreement? Anybody have any thoughts?
Not at this time.
Okay. No? Okay. Then I guess, then what we need to do is we, I guess what I'm looking for then is the structure as Mr. Ward has laid it out and he and I met and discussed are, is the board comfortable with moving in this direction with an ad hoc committee taking these things kind of piece by piece and bringing them back to us incrementally for discussion by the board?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No problem with the ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll go with that structure. The next question is, is then we need to, I need to reconfirm who's going to be the ad hoc because when we, we had some questions about who that was going to be and then when we put out for meetings, we could not get responses. And so I, I attended and asked Mr. Naffa to attend because I wanted at least to begin talking about the structure and moving forward. So I want to go on record of who the actual ad hoc committee is so that that, that task will keep moving forward. So if the...
You might go further with yourself if you have any questions to ask.
I'm, I'm fine with that. If that's, if that's what the, if the board is fine with that, then Mr. Naffa and I will go ahead and...
I am absolutely 100% fine with that. This is a good time for those with incredible amount of workload right now to pass that to those that have the time potentially to do a better job at negotiating this agreement than those that don't.
Okay.
Because I won't be able to do it the proper justice it deserves at this point.
Okay.
And if you don't...
Even though I love Jeremy dearly.
And if you don't want to do it, then I'd be willing to do it.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Naffa and I took our first stab at it. We will, we will keep moving and if, if it, if we hit a, if somehow we hit a log jam and having fresh eyes will be good, then, then I will feel free to hand it off to somebody. So...
Well, your idea is to sit there and kind of go through the weeds and then bring us some sticks.
Absolutely. That's the goal.
So, you know, I think you two are perfectly capable of doing that.
Thank you.
If there's anything to iron out, it's that we can do that.
It's always good to have the confidence of your fellow board members.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to emphasize, with this structure, the ad hoc committee, of course, doesn't actually make any final decisions.
Correct.
They make some recommendations and then brought back to the board. So for instance, at the previous meeting, a member of the public did mention that she wanted to participate in the discussions. And to the extent that she attends the public meetings, she'd be welcome to do so. But of course, that's different than the ad hoc committee that's figuring out and navigating and making recommendations.
And did you let her know that, that that was an appropriate risk?
Until the board just took the actions it took, I didn't have that information.
Okay. So the board is going to move forward with the recommendations as, as you have laid out. We will continue to process this and myself and Commissioner Naffa will serve as the ad hoc and we will bring back to you some sticks as soon as we can get them out of the weeds.
See, exactly. But I think someone needs to address Mrs. Cooper of how it's going to be handled.
I'd be happy to give her a call and let her know.
Thank you.
Are you okay with that, Chair?
Absolutely. I think I'll let our director take care of that. And if he needs follow-up on that, I would be happy to do so. All right. Anything else that we need to discuss regarding the collection franchise this afternoon? Anything, Jeremy, that you wanted to talk about?
[inaudible]
All right. Good deal. I like the illustration. All right. Nothing for the transfer station under item, bullet point six, other general solid waste authority matters, public hearing and discussion, possible action regarding the proposed Delano Solid Waste Management Authority, budget for 1819.
So this is the same budget that you've seen previously, both as members of the Solid Waste Authority Board and as respective members of the City Council and the Board of Supervisors. So it hasn't changed. Our, neither have our responsibilities changed. Neither has the impact on rates. We still, even after this rate adjustment, will have the lowest rates in the region. There's a numerical comparison. Staff is unchanged since our last discussion. The, both Board of Supervisors and the City Council have had an opportunity to review and comment. We do not have any specific comments. Again, I'll highlight that this money, this budget does set aside some money towards development of the Northern Transfer Station. I do not know at this time whether or not that's, how far that will get us, but at least there is budget in order to start down that path. And it does include OPEB funding that was equal to the amount in the previous budget. We did publish a public hearing notice twice in the Delnoort triplicate, and so the process would be to first have a public hearing and receive any public comments before taking action. The budget as proposed, as you all are aware, this board oversees approximately $8.5 million of activity annually, the bulk of that being the collections and services provided by Recology Delnoort, and then the larger fraction by Hambro WSG and the smaller fraction being the authority agency itself. And we staff the gates and do the accounting and of course, attend and staff these meetings. Regarding our revenues, you can see the bulk of our revenues come from the transfer station fees. Another good portion comes from the franchise fees and smaller amounts comes from grants and interest and other payments. Regarding expenditures, largest portion of expenditures are for salaries. Second largest expense is that set aside for developing the Northern Transfer Station. Then we have the transfer station loan payments and the OPEB payments before our smaller expenses. Of course, you can also notice that depreciation is actually a budgeted expense. That's always worth explaining because those of us who do taxes or do taxes for our business understand depreciation is essentially kind of a write-off. But for a joint powers authority, that's a funded expense, meaning that we set aside about $90,000, $90,98,000 and that that money goes into our cash balance the subsequent year, whether it is a funded expense. These changes will impact rates. There will be a slight in, increase in rates. These are the collection services rates comparing the proposed rates for fiscal year 17, I'm sorry, the proposed rates in the far left and then comparing them to our current rates in the next column, looking at the change and the percentage change. I mentioned before that because Recology gets, all collections rates have three components, a collections component, a transport component, and a disposal component. So they get the CPAI adjustment to all of those rates, but at a certain point, the disposal has gone up more than is accommodated by the CPI increase. So they also get an adjustment based on the change in disposal. So you'll see this year, the larger bins that have a larger percentage of disposal as a portion of those rates, those have a slightly higher rate increase. Regarding the transfer station rates, you can see that they're somewhere between 2% and 4% increase. Some of that's due to rounding. And at the Klamath Transfer Station, so the, the big impact people will see is the minimum charge goes from $7.50 to $7.75. The per ton rate goes from 148.50 to 151.44. The Klamath Transfer Station and the Gaski Transfer Station will keep their same minimum charge, but there is an increase in the per cubic yard fee. So with all of that review, we've completed the process. So staff recommendations, first conduct a public hearing and then, having received those comments, consider and possibly adopt this, this budget.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ward regarding the budget?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Okay.
Any other questions?
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 Right, so those are the residential collection rates. So if you have a twenty gallon mini cart on the curb plus recycling, it's twenty-one seventy-five per month. Those are billed three months at a time and unlimited recycling is included with that currently. Is, that's if it's off curb, so that's if they have to walk back to behind the fence and, and roll it out to be collected. It's, it's not a very common thing, but it's a, it's an important service for those who want it. Because there, of course, there are people with limited mobility issues and so they, and some other people don't want to have to roll out the cart. That's correct, all of these adjustments are, are based on the contract, there's no change to the contract.
All right, good. Any other questions? The budget, yes.
So the CPI is two percent? Yeah, I think it said that in there when I was looking. So, so the rest you said is disposal increase?
Yes, for the collections contract, like I said, there are three components to each rate. So each, every single one of these rates is broken into three parts. There's the collections, the transport, and the disposal. The idea being that it takes a certain amount just to get the truck to the place, a certain amount to transport it from one place to another, and that'll vary depending on the size of the container. And then their disposal cost. The disposal cost is always adjusted by CPI, but because it's adjusted separately under their agreement and Recology pays the disposal cost when they arrive at the transfer station, there can arise a situation where the disposal has increased more than they've been compensated by CPI, so that's the reason for the additional adjustment.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
One, going back to the OPEB question that we had a considerable amount of discussion on a couple of months ago, do you believe what you're hearing from the state that this will remain within budget for the remainder of our next fiscal year? Because I'm pretty concerned that what I'm hearing coming down the pipeline, we might not have enough in there. I'm just wondering if you're hearing the same things I am.
We have not received a better number from Catherine McLeod yet.
Okay.
We're in contact with her, but I haven't received another number yet. I told her what I was doing, she said that seemed like it was a reasonable enough approach, but I don't have any additional information to modify this number.
Nothing firm at this point, that's fair enough.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we should be prepared.
We certainly don't want to be in a situation where mid-year, where, or past mid-year, we're all of a sudden coming up with another hundred and sixty thousand dollars while we were very fortunate this year to have had a very, very positive cash flow year and that didn't affect us. I'm not sure that we can guarantee for that next year.
Agreed, and we'll be watching that closely. Our hope is that by having made that large payment last year and having budgeted an equally large payment in the coming fiscal year, that we'll be in much better shape with regards to this application.
It's, and I hope you're right, because it does dictate how we move forward with our expense line items and what we cut back and what we don't, based on that number that's been placed in there, because a hundred thousand dollar swing one way or another is pretty significant to our budget.
It is, and it, I could tell you from the last budget transfer, it's hard to find a hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and none of us want to go towards cuts in staffing, and that's generally the first place that's looked at.
Agreed, sir.
Okay. Just making everybody aware.
And I know we talked about when that report will come, which is what, in the fall? Is that when you'll be expecting it?
We'll be giving her a call in the next few weeks, because I, we haven't heard from her and I'm, I'm quite curious.
So, so once we get that report, you'll have it scheduled, we'll have a discussion.
Of course.
Good.
All right, anything else? Any public comment regarding the eighteen nineteen budget? All right, seeing none.
I, I think you should use the word public hearing, opening the public hearing, closing the public hearing.
I thought I opened the public hearing already. But, okay, well, if I didn't, then I'll open the public hearing and for the eighteen nineteen budget and I'll take any public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we will bring it back to the, the Commission for action. Somebody's got to make a motion that we approve the budget.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a, I have a motion and a second, would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair and score?
Yes, very good. All right, last item on our agenda is advocacy positions. We have several positions here, some of them are companion pieces of legislation. Mr. Ward, you want to talk about those a little bit?
Yes, this is the, more or less the same list of bills that was presented before, I did include bills that the Board has already adopted a position on, you'll see that several of them are now inactive. So if the Board was to pick and choose an additional potential items to support, staff would particularly encourage adopting support positions regarding AB four 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 and SB four five two. AB four 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 essentially addresses home generated sharps. This is a problem that still is in both the recycling and the solid waste streams, it's a health hazard, we really should be managing the sharps better. And then the other one is SB four five two, and that's the bottle bill fix, we still have problems supporting our existing recycling infrastructure for buybacks and SB four five two would help improve that situation.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Ward? Are we good with, with sending support letters for these? Consensus? Yeah. Okay. All right, all right, we have consensus, if you will put those together and anything you do it.
Okay, consensus, I, so the only, my understanding of what just happened was the consensus of the Board is to adopt support positions for AB four 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 and SB four five two and not change any of the other positions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we've come to the end of our, of our, you have something?
I was just going to ask, so the others, we haven't sent any letters on, is that correct?
As soon as I get an opportunity, I, I, these are always very timely things, so I really try to send the letter straight off.
So it just depends on the timing?
It does, in this case, I anticipate the letters will go off next Monday.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, anything for the good of the order, Commission have anything that you want to share? I didn't think so. Make, make a, make a note, Mr. Ward, we will never schedule a solid waste meeting on the same day that the Board of Supervisors meet, that is a fair thing for them, and I certainly can appreciate that.
Thank you for the marathon effort.
It's one thing to have a meeting before a meeting, but after is very difficult, and so I appreciate you guys being here and I know it's been a long day, so. Anything, Mr. Ward? All right, then we will stand adjourned until our next regular meeting, July seventeenth at three thirty, right here. Thank you.